Maybe, maybe Jacqueline. I don't think it was Olivia.
It's just crumbled in my bag.
I don't think it was Olivia.
Hi.
Hi, Dr. Olson.
Hi.
How's the family?
Like, we don't even like.
I know.
I know, I know. How's everything with you?
How's the baby?
He's good.
You have to keep the hard talks, right?
I love the virtual part when I used to see him all the time. So cute.
He's, uh...
This is...
He's doing things. I'll have to show you a video.
Here's our kids.
Oh, my gosh, he's so funny.
There's Stephanie and Mort. This is what they're watching for dinner.
Oh, we got a star. Oh, my God. You can't, you can't make it up. You can't make it up.
No.
Good evening. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. I would like to start by explaining the format of tonight's meeting. The Board of Education provides two opportunities for you to express your ideas and share your thoughts. The first will be after we receive an update from our superintendent. The second will be after our meeting has concluded. Both sessions will be thirty minutes in duration, and all speakers will be limited to three minutes to give as many people a chance to speak as possible. Please approach any one of the microphones in front of the auditorium. Please state your name prior to beginning your comments so that the district clerk can accurately reflect the minutes of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Rogers will let you know when you have thirty seconds left so you can wrap up your comments before the end of the three minutes. You must be stationed at a microphone to express your ideas and share your thoughts with the board. The Board of Education respects the varied opinions of the community and will provide a comfortable and safe environment. Any behaviors that threaten the integrity of tonight's meeting will not be tolerated and will cause the Board of Education to adjourn the meeting. Complaints or challenges should follow procedures listed under Policies fourteen hundred, fourteen ten, and/or fourteen forty, which are included on the materials table. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of fire, I know if you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. The first ten rows in the auditorium should use the exit to my left. Those in the back of the room should use the rear doors and exit the building to their left. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to amend the order of business?
I make a motion to amend the order of business contained in the public meeting agenda set forth in Policy two-three-five-zero to allow the board to vote upon the consent agenda, review and vote on discussion and action items, and consider discussion items prior to the superintendent's update during the January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Board of Education.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items one, A through L, two, A through L, and three, A through D, be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Zakian, you have a draft policy and regulation to discuss this evening?
I do. Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. Policy zero-one-one-one, Title IX and its corresponding regulation is a new policy that comes to us directly from our legal counsel at Gersio and Gersio. It has also been thoroughly reviewed by the Policy Committee. This addresses Title IX of the Education Amendments Act of nineteen seventy-two, and it prohibits the discrimination on the basis of sex in any education program or activity. This policy speaks specifically of providing for the prompt and equitable resolutions of complaints of sex discrimination, including sexual harassment. The corresponding regulation also provides for very specific investigative procedures to be followed by the district's Title IX officer when such a complaint is received. Lastly, this policy also provides for the ability to locate the name of the district's Title IX officer, which is the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, on the district's website, as well as within our schools. It's important to note that this new policy supports Policy zero-one-one-zero, sexual harassment, which we already have in our policy book. The two exhibits within this policy are the Sexual Harassment Form Complaint and the Sexual Harassment Complaint Appeal, both of which are already part of Policy zero-one-one-zero. I am now happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you. This policy will be placed on the consent agenda for March.
Thank you. Mr. Defendini, can we have your monthly update, please?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Goldberg. A couple of things for the boards for my update this month. The first one is some good news to share with the board. Obviously, I had made mention at a previous board meeting, and we actually sent out a communication to the community about the March, I'm sorry, the May twenty-first Special Olympics that's going to be held here at our very own athletic complex and Aquatic Center. Next week, we're going to be sending out an important communication to our community as a whole. We'll send it out on the Parent Link system. We'll pop it up on Facebook. If there are any other ideas as to how we can get it out, we're certainly open to that, but we are going to be looking for volunteers. There's a specific form that has been designed by Special Olympics that needs to actually be filled out by each of the volunteers. Pretty clear as to the different kinds of responsibilities that somebody can choose to take on. When you actually get into the portal, you'll be able to pick whether or not you want to be a leader of a particular event or a marshal, or you want to work in a particular capacity. A person would pick what they want to be able to do, fill out the relevant information. That would populate to a list that we'd ultimately use in order to be able to build the hundreds of volunteers that we're going to need in order to be able to get this thing off the ground. Also, within that communication is going to be another opportunity for small businesses, larger businesses, that want to actually be involved in it by taking out a table. So one of the things that we have the ability to set up that we're very excited about is the village of the actual event. So in the main area, by the traffic circle, by the concession stand, we're going to be using that area as the Special Olympics Village, where, again, any entity can make a decision that they want to take out a table, and that table would then provide something for the athletes to do during downtime. So sometimes a student athlete might have an opportunity to participate earlier on in the games and then have to wait a little while, and there's a lot of downtime in between. People that host tables can provide fun games for the students to be able to do while they have their downtime. So that's another exciting opportunity and another way in which our community can get involved. Again, a communication will go out from my office next week, inviting people to take part in it in these couple of different kinds of ways, and we're excited to see how this thing plays out over the course of the next couple of months. Any questions with regard to that one?
I have a question. I imagine you're going to get a slew of people wanting to volunteer. Are we keeping it just for Farmingdale? Or is it first come, first served? Are we giving preference to Farmingdellers first?
Yep. So, no, it is open to the public. Anybody can choose to participate if they want to. It doesn't have to be just Farmingdale people at the end of the day, but what we, what there is an opportunity to do is, not only are there specific things that you can register for, but even if those are all booked up, because we have the eight marshals that we need as an example for track and field, people can volunteer to be a part of, like, general volunteer, because there are going to be people that potentially don't show up, right? Can't make it. They have some sort of a family emergency that they get pulled away. So we're going to need a whole crew of additional people that might not be specific to a particular event, but we still need those names. Even if it goes past that, there are some groups that I've spoken to leading into this communication. Let's just say the Girl Scout, a particular Girl Scout troop or a specific sports team wants to get involved. We need cheerleaders as well, right? So we need people to actually cheer on the athletes, and that could be in and of itself. A whole opportunity for students to volunteer by creating signs, you know, and being a part of the audience to cheer on the athletes during the actual day of the game. So there's a lot of different opportunities within there. We are going to be looking to obviously, you know, pick out the people who can, you know, effectively do the jobs that we're asking them to do, but there are a lot of different opportunities, and we're pretty much going to say no to nobody. Everyone will have an opportunity to participate if they want to in some way. A quick Aquatic Center update. Again, if you're watching what's going on, you know, on the site, we're continuing to move along really well with the Aquatic Center project. On the outside, the last piece that needs to be completed is actually the north wall. That's that curved wall portion of the Aquatic Center, which is close, at this point, to being in final form. We have the glazing that needs to go in there. And then we turn our attention to the inside of the building. We're only about a week or so away from having the meter put in for natural gas, which means that we can heat the inside of the building, and once we bring heat into the building, then we can get to all of that final work. Paint, you know, the block fill, and all the other final finishes that need to be a part of the project. So we are moving along really well. We still do anticipate an early spring opening of the pool. There's nothing right now that holds us back. The only two things that are weather-dependent are the asphalt work that needs to be done, as well as the roofing system, about two weeks for each. So we do need a little bit of a break in the weather in order to be able to get to those projects, but, again, our contractors seem to be pretty confident at this point in time that they can get to that early spring date that we had promised. Any questions on that? Another one that we're going to be sending out a communication. We've been receiving test kits from the state of New York. We had provided an open opportunity for our parents to pick up test kits if they were so interested. If you didn't want one, we were certainly not forcing it on anybody. We've actually received so many test kits that we're actually going to be opening up to the community in general. We just have more at this point in time than there is need or desire, you know, at the local level, so we are going to be opening that up. So that's an opportunity for anyone in the community that does feel the need to pick up a kit. We could be that source for them, at least at this point in time, based upon the volume of kits that are coming in that haven't been used, you know, by our, by our parents or by our staff members. And the last piece that I have is Portrait of a Graduate, another communication that's going to be going out next week. We've been talking a lot about this. What we envision here in Farmingdale for our graduates is something that we wanted to really dial in on a little bit more clearly than, than maybe we have at this point in time. What are those particular skills? What are those particular attributes that we expect from graduates? And how do we backbuild that? How do we make sure that every single Farmingdale graduate, as an example? I've used this a number of times before because it does seem like it's something that's essential, you know, be a part of some sort of philanthropic opportunity, right? They've given back to the community in some sense or another. Personal finance, as an example. If it's something that we believe is important, that every student needs to really understand the depths of personal finance. That the first question in the series of questions is going to set to go out, hopefully, within the next week. There'll be a little video on the front side, kind of taking everybody through the process, and this is a really exciting thing for us. I know that there's a lot of things going on right now, and it is a tricky time, but trying to focus in on, again, what are those essential elements that we're looking for from our graduates so we can really start the hard work of backbuilding our programs to make sure that we're checking those boxes and we're meeting our students' needs based upon the expectations of our parents, of our staff members, of, right? We went through all of the different entities in which, that are going to be a part of this: local businesses, universities, the military. What are those things that, that, all of those entities that we're going to be sending our students to? What do they believe are essential qualities? And how do we make sure that that does, or at some point in time during their academic lives, that they are, encounter that so that we can have that fidelity to our program or meeting the expectations of our community? So we're excited to start that work. We've been talking about it for a little while now. We are at a place, I think, where we're ready to start that process, and you should expect the communication within the next week. Lastly, just a couple of items for old business. There was a question that was asked by a parent about the band program and about state assessments at the last board meeting. We had administrators from the district respond to the question specific to the parent. It had to do with the use of our facility here at the middle school because we were doubling the use of the facility here as an opportunity to put the kids in a location during their lunch periods, beyond the heavy inclement weather, and that was taking up a place that, that the band was practicing in. So there was some overlaps and some complications there where it did create some interruptions to our band program for a couple of weeks. We have resolved those issues at this point in time, and there's a plan in place in order to make sure that the band program continues to run with fidelity. And there was another question asked by the same parent about state assessments and where are those scores? And we were able to work with the parent, as well as the community in general, just to send something out real quick to make sure that we pointed people as to where they can get that state assessment data. There was another series of questions that were asked about masks, mask-related concerns. Some of it had to do with legal-related issues, and I know that Mr. Goldberg, yourself, as well as our legal counsel, have been working on addressing some of those items, so I'll turn it over to you for a formal response to that question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Defendini. We received an email on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two from a group known as the Moms for Liberty, which contained a series of legal questions. At the outset, we are compelled to point out that several of the questions posed involve complex legal issues. Generally, boards of education and their attorneys do not dispense legal counsel or advice to residents or other members of the public. That being said, we did want to provide responses to the issues included in that email. Many of the questions, specifically questions one, two, six through eight, ten, eleven, fifteen through seventeen, and the last unnumbered question, appear to address the propriety, legality, and enforceability of the regulation and the New York Department of Health determination, which contain the state's mask mandates. As such, these issues are the subject of the current appeal commenced by the state before the appellate division, Second Department, in the case of Demetrio Edal versus New York State Department of Health Edal, the case in which the decision rendered by the lower court, Supreme Court, Nassau County, enjoying the aforementioned masks mandate. Therefore, rather than offer speculative answers to these, to those questions, we believe it is better for all of us to await the decision of the court. In this regard, please be assured that whatever the court's decision is, we intend to comply with it. For example, if the mask mandate is discontinued by the court temporarily or on a permanent basis and no longer applies, we will revert to our prior board resolution, which made the wearing of masks in schools optional. However, at least at this time, it is our understanding that temporary stay of the enforcement of the lower court's order has been granted. Therefore, pursuant to a recent directive issued by the Commissioner of Education and the applicable case in statutory law, unless, unless and until that stay is lifted or other court order is issued, we are required to continue to follow the state's mask mandates. With regard to the question number nine, inquiring as to the data used by the district in connection with its mask decision, it is unclear to us as to what information is being requested. Presuming that the references to data relate to the imposition of mask mandates, it is important that we all understand that those mask mandates were not formulated by the district. Rather, those mandates were imposed by the state after it used whatever metrics it obtained in reaching its determination to adopt a regulation and issue the aforementioned mask mandates. As to questions regarding proposed fines, fire marshal involvement, or that of the Nassau County Police Department, questions twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, please be advised that we are not aware of fines being imposed by the Nassau County Department of Health, whether any fire marshal has shut down businesses or events, or whether the Nassau County Police Department has arrested anyone in connection with mask mandates. However, the state has indicated that violations of the aforementioned regulation and determination could result in the imposition of fines. It is our hope that we've answered at least some of your questions pending the court's determination in the above referenced appeal. It is our expectation that your remaining questions, some of which, which will now be addressed by our attorneys regarding the state's mask mandates, will be answered when the court issues its decision on the stay and the merits of the appeal. At this time, it is my understanding that our district's attorneys wish to address some of the remaining questions. Mr. Gersio, Ms. Miles?
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. As, is it working? As to questions posed, numbers three through five, regarding the authority of the state over public school districts and the withholding of aid by the state, that authority is provided by statute to the New York State Commissioner of Education, specifically Section three oh five of the New York State Education Law, provides in part that the Commissioner of Education is the chief executive officer of the state system of education and the Board of Regents, that the Commissioner is required to enforce all general and special laws relating to educate, the education system of the state. The Commissioner shall execute all educational policies determined by the Board of Regents. The Commissioner shall have the general supervision over schools, and the Commissioner shall have and execute such further powers and duties as she shall be charged by the, by the Regents. In addition to the powers and duties that I've just reviewed, Section three oh six of the education law, entitled Removal of School Official, of Officers Withholding Public Money, provides at paragraph one that if it is proven to the Commissioner's satisfaction that a member of the Board of Education or Superintendent of Schools has been guilty of any willful violation or neglect of duty or any other act pertaining to common schools or other educational institution participating in state funds or willfully disobeys the decision, order, rule, or regulation of the Regents or of the Commissioner of Education, said Commissioner, after a hearing made by order, remove such school officer from office. And the Commissioner may also withhold from any district its share of the public money of the state for willfully disobeying any provision of law or any decision, order, or regulation. Further, Section three oh nine of the education law, entitled Schools of Union-Free School Districts and Cities, further provides that the Commissioner is charged with the general supervision of boards of education and their management and conduct of all departments of instruction. The above statutes clearly state that the state of New York, through the Commissioner of Education, has supervisory authority over schools, boards of education, and superintendents of schools, can remove board members and superintendents, and can withhold public funds for neglect of duty, disobeying a decision, order, rule, or regulation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miles.
And one more piece of old business. Obviously, a lot of parents had questions about what the board's position was with regard to masks, the executive order. There were a lot of different questions that came to the mic in that realm, so I'll turn it back over to the board for a response to that question as well.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. As you all know, the Board of Education recently issued several letters to the community that outlined our position on mask-wearing in our schools. The theme of those letters has been consistent with the board's position since the start of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. We have worked alongside our leadership team to ensure a consistent, live instructional environment for our children, including uninterrupted after-school programs and extracurricular activities. Quarantine protocols have been established that limit the number of students impacted by positive cases. This has served as our foundation since our schools opened last September. We are proud of our entire Farmingdale family for helping to make this a reality. Now, just to be crystal clear, in the event that the state's mask mandate no longer applies, the Board of Education will unanimously support this position and institute a mask optional policy here in the Farmingdale School District.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. And I just have one more piece of business before we move on to the first public participation. On tonight's agenda, we have a very special retirement that I'd like to just say a few words before the Board of Education actually takes action. words before the Board of Education actually takes action. I want to take a moment to pay tribute and honor to someone very special, to me and to all of us on this stage tonight. I want to take you through a quick journey of Glenn's career and how Glenn ultimately landed a Daller, and I might say, he is a true Daller for life. Glenn began his career in education in 1987 while serving as a substitute, special education assistant, and physical education teacher in the Longwood School District. In fact, if you want to know an interesting little fact about that, little tidbit, Mr. Zakian was actually terminated by former superintendent, Mr. Lorenz. He was excessed at that point in time because he was low man on the seniority list during his time here. So with thanks to Mr. Lorenz, who began Glenn's career in a way that landed him here in Farmingdale. Glenn eventually landed a Harberfield job where he was a physical education teacher and eventually promoted to the coordinator of athletics in 1995 to 2005. Glenn always has a welcome, welcomes every challenge and opportunity to grow and impact others. In 2005, Glenn was then hired as the assistant principal of JFK High School in the Plainview Old Bethpage School District. After serving three years, he was ready for his next challenge. It was then in 2007 when Glenn was the clear finalist for the Farmingdale High School principal job. As they say, the rest is history. From that moment on, Glenn became the heart and soul of the high school, making deep connections with the students, parents, and faculty. Everyone adored Mr. Z, as they would call him. Glenn, I haven't told you this until now, but the line out my door telling stories about how Glenn impacted them in one way or another has been extensive. In 2016, Glenn established a strong team here at Farmingdale High School and sought out another new challenge. As fate would have it, there was a retirement in central office and Glenn was brought in as the assistant superintendent for human resources and administration. Since 2016, Glenn has taken on the task of working with a great team of dedicated professionals in the HR office to lead one of the largest hiring efforts we've ever had, creating a rebranding campaign with the help of Farmingdale alumni, leading and supporting a team of nurses in districts in their unending and sometimes agonizing COVID protocols. Glenn, professionally, your impact has been profound. On a more personal level, I had the good fortune to know Glenn on a deeper level during his time in our schools. Our late-night conversations after the halls were empty and our schools quieted down for the day were frequent. During these quiet times, I got to know Glenn not only as an administrator, but also as the son of Janice and Samuel, as the husband of Lori, and as the father of Matt, Danielle, and Alexandra, as a teacher, as a coach, and as a friend. I can tell you without reservation that Glenn is an exceptional human being. He is kind, he is genuine. He is pragmatic, he is courteous, he is loyal, he is humble, he cares deeply for others. He is salt of the earth. In short, he is the kind of person who modeled the behaviors that he expected from those he so faithfully served. I am a better person and we are a better school district for having Glenn in our lives all these years. I wish him nothing but the best as he ventures out into the world in new and interesting ways. Always remember, Glenn, that you are loved and admired by your Farmingdale family. Your legacy is secure and you're always welcome to come home to visit us anytime you like. Please join me in congratulating Glenn on his upcoming and well-deserved retirement.
Glenn, on behalf of the Board of Education, you will be dearly missed here. It was our honor and our privilege to have you here in our district.
Thank you so much for those kind words, Mr. Goldberg and Mr. Defendini. It has been an honor on my behalf to be a part of the Farmingdale family for the last 15 years. My experience working here with an extraordinarily dedicated board and supportive Board of Education, as well as amazing faculty, staff, administrators, parents, and most importantly, students, has been nothing short of incredible. My time has truly been, my time in Farmingdale has truly been like the most rewarding period in my 35 years in the field of education. And although I will truly miss everyone here in Farmingdale, I'm looking forward to spending some more time with my amazing family and beginning a new phase of my life, but I could honestly say that I will truly bleed Daley Green forever. So thank you so much.
I'd like to open the meeting for the first public participation. Please be sure to clearly state your name when you approach the microphone. As a reminder, public participation will be limited to 30 minutes. With each individual speaker will be, will have three minutes in which to ask their questions or to make any statements. The district clerk will hold the timer for us. If we do not get to all of the speakers during the first 30 minutes, we will reopen later in the meeting to continue. The meeting will now open for 30 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Z. Eric Morrow, 25, Dale Drive, Farmingdale, New York. I'm going to try to get this all in. I don't have later. Happy birthday, Carter. You guys, Gercio and Gercio, you mentioned, and I appreciate you guys responding to as much as you could, about the law. Mandate's not a law. Section 2.60 that the governor is doing everything under is not a law. It was struck down as a law. It just has a stay. So everything that ended in law, Board of Ed, superintendent, losing their job, being removed, is null and void based on it not being a law. So that is a problem because the U.S. Constitution is the Supreme Court of the land and the Ninth and Fourteenth Amendment say that enforcing an illegal law is a problem. So you should look into that, if you could, to the Gercio and Gercio team, who advise a lot of districts and didn't join the amicus brief. So Ralph, I appreciate you saying that it would be a unanimous vote in regards to this board unmasking our children. An amicus brief is nothing. It is simply saying to the judge, we are interested in the results of this case and we don't want our kids in masks either. It was literally no skin off your back. It would have been a simple letter and it wasn't done. So that leads me to believe that something else is nefarious. So if you don't want to vote for us to see and you want to say it's going to happen, can somebody do a poll? You could raise your hand and say, let's poll. And if you poll and everyone says, when this happens, we're going to take our masks off, then we know where you stand. But right now, we don't know where you stand. And that's a big problem. The issue that I have, and I love this school district, I've said it a million times, and I have a great relationship with many of you. My son is 11 today. Eleven! This kid, this kid stood up for his rights, civil disobedience on Wednesday, and he was sent home from Northside. Not suspended, not treated rudely by the staff. The administrator's been great. Everyone's stuck between a rock and a hard place. The problem is, people got to get over this and pass this. If a kid shows up without it, teachers don't need to be calling him out. He's got it around his chin. Where are all these kids? I had him count one day. He was in one class, 40-minute class. He was asked to raise his mask 14 times. That's once every three minutes. How can a teacher be teaching you anything if they're telling one kid, not just the whole class, to raise their mask? How could you possibly do that? It's worse than my mind with ADD all day.
Mr. Morrow, 30 seconds, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws. The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in the moment of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at the time and challenge of controversy. Martin Luther King, remember that. I'll leave you with this. If you offered me a pair of scissors, but the scissors couldn't cut paper, I'd decline the scissors, not because I'm anti-scissors, but because I'm not really interested in things that don't work or do what they're supposed to do safely. You can apply that to whatever else you feel that will fit. Thank you.
Mr. Morrow, just to clarify, Mr. Morales made a statement before, and I think the word unanimously was said as you walk out the building.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Miss, okay. Mr. Morrow, there was a statement made by Mr. Morales on behalf of the board, and I believe you can, Mr. Morales, you can repeat that one part of the statement, that word said it was unanimously. So I don't know, you're looking for a straw poll or a vote? There is no vote. It was, we already made a statement exactly, it was unanimously. The word unanimously means all of us, seven.
So do, can do the poll right now for me?
There is no need for poll. We already made the statement of unanimously.
So it's seven. We have seven votes for masks. If masks are off, we want masks off.
Do we have a dictionary? We could say what the word unanimously means?
I just want to make sure that you say it out loud.
Do we have a dictionary to say what the word unanimously means?
Yes, say it.
Unanimously, we said unanimously.
Done. Thank you for saying it on record. Appreciate it. Have a good day.
First, I want to thank all of you that sit before me, as I know, I get really nervous, sorry, that the roles you currently serve are not at all what you expected when you signed up. I know I seek for more than myself when I say you are appreciated. I just wanted to talk a little bit about some things that happened last week, a couple of the anecdotes, especially from the elementary level. There was a situation with a first grader on the school bus. That first grader was ridiculed to the point of tears by her peers for being maskless on the bus. That child's mother was called by the school to share that her daughter was extremely upset by the behavior of her fellow Dallers. I get extremely nervous, sorry. Another incident, a maskless fifth-grade student was told by her teacher that she needed to stay at least three feet away from the teacher because the teacher has family at home and cannot risk getting them sick. The teacher also denied helping the student when she was unmasked. That child went home and asked her parents to send her with a mask because she didn't want to upset her teacher. That child is going to carry the weight of that comment and those actions on her shoulders for the remainder of the school year. I have been an educator for 16 years, and I cannot justify any circumstance in which an educator has the right to deny a child support. I'm choosing to push my personal feelings about these incidents aside, but I have to share that this is concerning. I am concerned that our children are going to be made to feel that they are placing adults in danger because they are maskless. Children need to feel comfortable, and it should not impact the quality of their interactions with their teachers. Our children cannot be made to feel contagious, to feel less than, or to feel that they need to fear going near their beloved teachers. I'm also concerned for our educators. They have been teaching under extreme duress and carrying the burden of this pandemic and the politics surrounding it on their shoulders for nearly three years. So this really brings me to my question. When local control is granted to the individual school districts in regards to mass choice, what supports are going to be put in place to keep our children and staff safe as they transition to a mask-optional environment from a mental health standpoint? These two incidents alone demonstrate that there is definitely a significant need for support. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Erica Weber, 214 Conlon Street. I'm here today to speak for the most vulnerable members of our Daller community, the children of the special education program. Sorry. My daughter was diagnosed, given a classification and an IEP, April of 2021. However, that process was not an easy process, and for a parent, it was extremely frustrating. I know my daughter, and I knew something was wrong, even during kindergarten, and unfortunately, COVID then happened. I spoke with my daughter's first-grade teacher right at the beginning of September 2020. It wasn't until January 2021 when she was evaluated, and I was told she's fine. I fought for an independent evaluation, and I finally got the diagnoses that I knew that she had, three of them, ADHD, dyslexia, and speech-language disorder. It wasn't until the first week of May of 2021 that we finally got an IEP. Now, this year, she's been getting her services. However, unbeknownst to me, my daughter has not progressed since October of 2021, and I am finding about, out about this in January of 2022. On IEPs, as I'm aware, we are supposed to get reports during normal report cards with the goals and how they're progressing with the goals on IEPs. It wasn't until January 24th that I actually had to reach out to the S, the CSE community and ask, where is the report for my daughter? I find out my daughter's reading teacher is going on leave for three months. I ask, where is the information? Well, when I finally got the information on January 28th, I was completely frustrated and dismayed. She's not progressing at all. If I would have known this in December of 2021, I would have fought for my daughter to have a committee meeting. Now, a month and a half later, I have to fight to try and get more services for my daughter. As a leader, as the leaders of the Farmingdale School District, I am bringing to you a system problem. The special education system is broken, and it needs to be evaluated to supply, to provide the absolute best for their students. We should not let the students fail because of a system failure. I was on Long Island Moms Group, and someone asked what districts on Long Island were good with special education. And one mom says, and I quote, "We're Nassau Suffolk border. Farmingdale is horrible for special education services."
Mrs. Weber, I'm really sorry, but we're finished with the three minutes for you, and I would invite you to come back in the second public participation. It seems like you have a lot of important things to say.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the 30 seconds.
Because I did not want to interrupt you.
So I just, I just want to finish my one last sentence.
Absolutely.
So I'm looking to the leaders of this school district to evaluate the special education process and to help make the process easier and better for parents, for our children, and provide the best that they deserve. So I ask, as the parent of two children in the Farmingdale School District, I ask you, will you be leaders for our children or not? Thank you.
So again, I just wanted to thank you for the comments. Obviously, we can't get into the details of specific students, but I would invite you to give Mrs. Maloney, who's sitting right up here, a phone call first thing tomorrow morning, and we could certainly work with you and whatever other concerns there might be specific to this situation or other circumstances that we need to be made aware of. Thank you.
You ready for me? Hi, Lauren Racine. My address is obviously on file in the district. This is not normally my thing, so just bear with me. So I wrote it down. While most of us are all here to listen and some to speak, I have to say, like I just said, this is not normally my thing. I feel compelled, however, to advocate for my children, our children, no matter what the circumstance, and yours certainly takes precedence. Whether we're speaking up for change or to discuss the new athletic complex or curriculum, I will tell you one thing I'm not here to do, and I'm not here to throw jabs or discount any work that anyone up there has done or anyone out here has, is advocating for, especially our teaching staff. It's been a really rough two years for every single one of us. I may not agree with some of what others have done or have to say, but this is what the Constitution has laid out for us Americans, freedom of speech, freedom of choice. We all live in this community for many reasons. The location of Farmingdale is central to everything, the city, the beach, the East End, the North Shore, the South Shore. We have a great Main Street now. But many of us, like myself and my husband, have grown up here, and we made a choice to stay here and raise our kids here. We know Farmingdale is awesome, and it will remain awesome if we can all stand up and show our kids what we will do to advocate for them, whether it's about masks or otherwise. Opinions will always vary, but hypocrisy cannot, cannot be the norm. One day masks, the next day no masks. One day optional, one day mandatory. The state government, and I know it's not you guys, as Mr. Defendini and the Gercio team laid out, the state government has become a toddler having a temper tantrum, changing the rules of a game as they go because they don't like the way you're playing it. because they don't like the way you're playing it. There are examples of this, though, in our district, too. While they may not have been consciously dismissed as being hypocritical because of social media, it has come to our attention, and it's sending the wrong message to everyone, regardless of where you stand on the mask issue. Our district had a great night back in December for families of student athletes. Their parents were able to come to the high school, watch it and stand proud of their kids as they sign their college commitment letters along with their coaches, principal, superintendent. The kids and their parents all posted pictures with wide smiles that they stood proud of themselves and each other, as they should.
Mrs. Racine, this is the thirty-second mark, so if you could just continue. Thank you.
I'll finish later, then. We were all able to see their smiles because they weren't wearing masks. There was a more recent with Senator Kevin Thomas at the high school. However, there was another event in December with special education classes. They invited their families to the building. We saw that on Facebook, too. All masked. Do you see the hypocrisy here? Our kids are seeing right through it. If you thought your teenagers rolled their eyes at you before, imagine what they're doing now. The youngest kids are seeing it, too. And I'm not just saying it because obviously you see what side I stand on. Every single kid sees through it across the nation. I know that you stand unanimous to have masks optional when that comes down, but practice what you preach. It's all or nothing here. Thank you.
All right. So how many minutes I got? Three or five?
You have three, Mr. Roth.
Do me a favor. Don't interrupt me on the thirty-second part. How about interrupt me on the one-minute part? Okay? Can you do that for me? Good. Roth, address on file. Looks like I didn't pass the audition at the last meeting, now, did I? You didn't like the tone or the decibel level of my voice? There's always a critic, all right? Teachers are permitted to scold students. Those school taxpayers are not permitted to scold the board when they're out of order, right? Look at all the irate parents raising their voices. That the board means all across the nation. You were given fair warning that was going to go to eleven and beyond very quickly. Okay? In the past, and more recently since July, I have posed questions over the past six months with the board has been unresponsive. I'll now recap on a couple of the topics, and would like to know when and how I'm going to receive a response, long overdue response. So at the July meeting, I bring up specifically that my comments are not directed at the administration or their representation. It's directed directly at the board. I talked about your live stream, asked about a time clock, the five-minute rule, which was discussed by Lorenz in 2018, converting it to five minutes, podium, you know? What am I supposed to do with my papers, right? Term limits on the website, why aren't they posted? All right, but I asked you to raise your hand at another meeting, who's up for reelection? Can't wait, right? Then I talked about your oath of office, and I explained about the New York Sullivan Times where sometimes vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks will be made on government officials. Hey, you ran for Board of Ed. If you don't like the criticism, then resign or don't run for reelection. I also spoke about a thirty-minute portion, if only one wants, you know, you could refit. I talked about the Facilities Advisor Committee, which boards were assigned to it. I talked about air conditioning, L E D stage lighting, backup generators, emergency cooldown stations. And just because you don't like the tone or value of my voice, what happens if I came down and talked like a silver man? Would you have a pound with that? I'd be mocking you too much, huh?
Mr. More, that's your minute. One minute, please.
Thank you very much. It should be five minutes, didn't John Lorenz say in 2018? So, you know, I talked about how you suspended me four times violating the United States Constitution. And you never had to adjourn a meeting, but you did have to adjourn a meeting in June. In the August meeting, you had a woman make an obscene gesture by giving a finger and made it on the news. Let me ask you something. Did you ever send her a warning letter, certified requested, for violating your rules of decorum? Did you ever see me make an inappropriate gesture, right? But let's see. How much of my time is up right now? Because I only made it to not even August. I got six minutes.
You have twelve seconds.
Ah, twelve seconds. Well, in homage to Alex Lifeson from Rush, my freedom of speech, I could go blah, 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 for three minutes, if you saw the Rock of All Hall Fame back then when he reducted. So blah, 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 blah.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Thank you, Mr. Roth. Would anybody else like to speak right now? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the January 18th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 18th, 2022 special meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mrs. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this month?
Excuse me. So, yes, there have been a number of emails received during the past month. Several were in support of keeping masks, and conversely, several were received to allow for parent choice. Emails were received regarding Mr. Blakeman's executive order. There were emails in support of and also against the filing of the amicus brief to end the stay that was put in place on the Nassau County Supreme Court's decision. There was an email with a number of questions related to the rulings that came from Albany, which I believe Mr. Goldberg and Mr. -- I'm sorry, Ms. Miles addressed earlier this evening. We received an email that included contact information for members of the Locust Valley and Massapequa School District trustees. We received a request for information on the school district trustee election process. Emails were received regarding the sync between the audio and video from last month's board meeting, and there was a question regarding the use of certified mail. Finally, there was a letter thanking the district for allowing parents to attend the Timmy Collins Wrestling Tournament last month. There were a number of emails thanking and supporting the Board of Education and the district administration for their efforts, particularly during these very volatile times. And that was it for this month. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Are there any committee reports from the Board of Education?
Sure, I got a couple. First of all, next Tuesday at 7:00 P. M. via Zoom, there will be the -- the Airport Committee will be meeting via Zoom. It'll be a virtual meeting. Always one of my favorite meetings to hear that information. Library meeting was on the 18th. The Public Library meeting was on the 18th. They are, you know, also looking at their protocols with the mask. Masks are still required. They approved electricity for the new pavilion there. They will be starting a Main Street exhibit, which should be pretty awesome. Actually, it might be up already, but they mentioned that. And they set a new salary range for a new director because, as you may or may not know, Ms. Podolsky is -- her last day will be March 30th, and we wish her well. But they set a salary range as they start their search for a new director. Mr. Giordano and Mike Goldberg and myself, we have been to two B O C's budget meetings so far. If anybody would like to know what was -- things that were questioned in that budget, feel free to reach out to me. I have packets, you know, with all sorts of information discussing special ed, transportation. What else, guys? What am I forgetting? You know, state aid, et cetera. And I guess a little bit more on a personal note, not really a committee meeting, but our cheerleaders will be going to the national championships next Thursday. They leave early next Thursday. And, you know, I wish them well. I wish them the best of luck, and I know they're going to make Farmingdale proud.
Excuse me, Mr. Goldberg. Ms. Espinoza, because you reported on the library, I wanted to make sure that the community knew that the library vote for this year will take place on April 5th. It will no longer be part of the school district's budget vote and election. So that's for their budget and for their trustee race. So that's something that you'll get probably in the mail from the Public Library.
Okay. Our Legislative Action Committee has had several meetings with our local representatives. The last -- well, the last two was Assemblywoman Kimberly Jean-Pierre and our Assemblyman Michael Montesano. So thank you for taking care of that, Dr. Brennan. Policy Committee has met several times as well. Mr. Zakian, thank you for heading that. That committee, actually, we just -- it was on the agenda for -- one of the policies was on the agenda for tonight. Also, our safety meeting meets on Monday, this coming Monday. Policy was meeting on Friday, so it's a lot of stuff going on this week. Our Chamber of Commerce has had several ribbon cuttings for our local businesses. And we ask that when you shop and dine, just consider our local businesses. It really helps with our community. And they'd be -- they're great businesses and restaurants, so please take advantage of their offerings. Farmingdale Youth Council is reviewing the budget requests for our organizations. We're hoping to run the summer program this year, which would, provided that it passes on our budget, they would start on June 27th and end on July 29th. That's for the summer program. Our winter programs are up and running. You can find out all this information on the Farmingdale Youth Council website. And one important thing that we need to get out to our seniors, our seniors at the high school. The Farmingdale Youth Council is, again, offering two scholarships this year: community service-related scholarships. Each is in the amount of $1,000. One is in the memory of Marie Tuck, and the other is on memory of Dr. Gary Karp. All graduating seniors who reside in the Farmingdale School District are eligible to apply. So please get the word out there. The applications can be found on our Farmingdale Youth Council website, farmingdaleyouthcouncil.org, and in our guidance department. So thank you all.
Kathy, I'm just going to jump on Chamber really quick.
Oh, sure.
Two things were missed. They're already having discussions about scholarships, so they will be reaching out to the high school regarding that. And a big announcement by Mayor Ralph Ekstrand for the Village Farmingdale. Soon, you're going to start to see lots of the sidewalks being broken up, and it's going to change the aesthetics. It's part of the beautification program. They're going to be burying the electrical lines on Main Street. So when you start seeing that, if it hasn't started already, that's what they're doing. And it's going to really, I think, make things look really pretty. Not that it doesn't already, but better. That was it.
Anybody else have any other committee reports? No? Okay, thank you. I'd like to open the meeting for the second public participation. Once again, please be sure to clearly state your name when you approach the microphone. As a reminder, public participation will be limited to thirty minutes. Each individual speaker will have three minutes in which to ask their questions or to make any statements. The district clerk will hold the timer for us. The meeting will now open for thirty minutes.
Ross, same thing, one minute into it. Give me the one-minute warning. Hey, slander reveals the greatest truth about the coward implementing it. You guys have been slandering me for I don't know how long. We get cancel culture. I invented cancel culture before it was even a term in the media. So let's see, if I had my podium, if I had a podium here like other districts do, I guess we can't afford one. Oh, my God, I'm fumbling papers. So you sent me a letter on January 21st, and this is great because this is what you twist around as a threat. So we'll go with this one. You will answer one day, believe me. Well, what that means is that when and if my case does go to trial and you're on the stand, you will answer. That judge will make you answer. That's what that meant. But everybody has a different interpretation, just like some people get scared at the tone of voices. This soft enough for you? I hear a very gentle sound. Your other alleged threat I made. You'll see your time is up. Well, I don't know how many times in December Goldberg told me my time was up when he wouldn't even check the website about the mistake they made. And Mary Rogers did mention about the mistake, but didn't give me credit for it. Let's see. If I run into any of you on the street, I'm going to embarrass you. But what you left out, the line was like the Democrats do. So what that meant was that in an article, let's say, from June 25th, 2018, Representative Maxine Walters of California, a Democrat, is under fire for saying that members of the Trump administration should be heckled when out in public. So there's your three alleged threats. The last one, well, it's the first one, where you said, when I'm bringing up about the affidavit and the narrative that you try to have going like I was stalking my elementary school building that my mom still works in, and because I had a vast knowledge of the building, I said, God help him. Well, since when is saying that somebody needs help from God a threat?
Okay, that's a minute. You have one minute.
Oh, gee, okay, gee. So, you know, when did that happen? You know, when -- God help him? Oh, was it the tone? Was it the tenure? Was it not measured? Oh, well, should I have said, I pray for him? Shall we pray now? Right? Lord, hear our prayer. So, you know, you're going to keep this up? Next month is three board meetings, and I can't wait. And let me tell you something. Just like in, what was it, 2015? You tried to get order protections? You tried. And the only person that got the order of protection back then was the superintendent, John Lorenz. And you try and get order protections now? Keep up the slander. Go ahead. You're, I should get an order of protection against all of you. And by all of you, I mean the board, not the administrators. So how much time do I got left?
Seven seconds.
Uh, mm. Well, blah, blah.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay. If there are no other speakers, I would like to thank everyone for their comments and concerns. And can I have a motion to adjourn, Mrs. D'Amico?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Have a good evening, everyone.